Committee, the meeting today is open to the public and is being webcast. We have received no public questions or petitions. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website, Sheffield Council's website that is, and a small amount of paper copies are available. Apologies to members who may not have a paper copy. If you need a paper copy, they're on the table there. May I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there's an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from Town Hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Please may I ask everyone to introduce themselves? If the elected members could introduce themselves first, please, and then the officers and NHS representatives.
councillor Jeff Anis, Chair of Barnsley, obvious in the committee.
Hi, it's councillor Sarah Smith from Doncaster Council and Chair of Health and Adult Social Care Scrutiny.
Morning, everyone. I'm Jane Murphy and I'm a scrutiny officer from Barnsley.
Caroline Martin, Senior Governance Officer from Doncaster Council.
Katie Davidson, I lead on involvement for NHS South Yorkshire.
Andy Ashcroft, I'm the Director of Communications and Engagement for NHS South Yorkshire.
Mariana Hargreaves, I work in Strategy and Partnerships at NHS South Yorkshire.
Deborah Glenn, and I'm the Support Officer for Sheffield Health Scrutiny and also for this committee.
Sarah Hyde, I'm Democratic Services at Sheffield City Council.
And myself, I'm Ruth Melsom, a member of the Adult Health and Social Care Committee here in Sheffield and Chair of the Health Scrutiny Committee at Sheffield Council and Chair of this committee. So, welcome to everybody and thank you for your time today. I am very aware that this committee has not met for a very long time and that this is somewhat rekindling, hopefully, an interest and aflame for the work that we do across the region, especially now that the integrated care system is now on a statutory footing since last July. And hopefully, we can go forward into the next municipal year with some regularity of meeting and a common sense of purpose between scrutiny members and members who represent the ICS. So, just for the benefit of members of the public, this committee is a body that scrutinises and provides a critical friend role to the integrated care system, which is governed by the Integrated Care Board and has an integrated care partnership on which representatives from the local authorities and NHS bodies are represented, as well as other public bodies and voluntary organisations. So, I'm going to ask our three representatives just to say a little bit more about what each of you do within that system, if that's all right, so we can understand a bit more about your roles. Mariana.
Lovely, happy to do that. So, I work in the Strategy and Partnership Directorate in NHS South Yorkshire, our Integrated Care Board. And my role is around supporting the strategy development with our partners. So, particularly our Integrated Care Partnership, which came together for the first time at the end of September last year. I also have a role going forward with supporting the development of our NHS Five Year Joint Forward Plan, and that's one of the things that I'm kind of keen to talk to you about again, in terms of how we enable the kind of ongoing kind of scrutiny role with respect to the development of that NHS Forward Plan.
So, yeah, so my role as Director of Communications Engagement, so really a number of facets to the role. So, for the Integrated Care Board, it's my job to make sure we've got systems and processes in place for communicating with our 1.4 million communities and those beyond that. And then, in addition to that, I've got a role in ensuring that we actively engage with our communities and consult with them when we need to, to make sure that the voice of those communities is heard and is reflected in the work that we do.
And I work as part of Andy's team, particularly heading up the citizen involvement, part of our work, leading the team across South Yorkshire.
Thank you very much, that's great. I have to ask if there are any items on this agenda for, oh, sorry, any apologies for absence first, please, Deborah.
Yeah, I have received apologies from councillor Tybia Seem from Doncaster and from Derbyshire councillor, no, sorry, that's Doncaster.
Doncaster's here, it's councillor Sarah Smith.
Sorry, I keep getting Doncaster and Rotherham mixed up, I don't know why. I do apologise. Councillor Seem is from Rotherham and the councillor from Derbyshire. Just bear with me.
Deborah, I think it's councillor Warby.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, because Cynthia Ramsom is from Doncaster as well. So, obviously, Doncaster are represented. She's a substitute, isn't she?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And are there any items for exclusion of the public or press?
No.
Any declarations of interest from members, any items on the agenda? Okay, we have no public questions or petitions today. If any members of the public are watching, would like to invite people to be interactive with this committee and to see this as a forum which public questions can be brought and discussed. We're very open and warmly receive public questions. So, on to item six, which is developing our initial integrated care strategy for South Yorkshire. And I believe you've brought a report on that. Is this the interactive report? Okay.
That's right. What we thought we'd do, if it's okay with you, is we've got a short set of slides and there's a number of us that will kind of participate in taking you through those. You'll have seen the paper that we shared ahead, so we thought if we go through the slides and then we're happy to kind of take any questions after that, is that okay? Lovely. So, if I kick off in that sense, it'd be great to just have the kind of first slide. So, what we thought would be helpful to do is to just start off with a little bit of context setting. So, I'm conscious that you kind of came together, didn't you, in formally in January time and you started to talk about the new arrangements in the NHS, the Integrated Care Partnership and the Integrated Care Board, the Integrated Care Board that came together in July time. And what this slide does really is just set out a little bit of the detail about the strategic planning context that we have. So, when we came together in July, we started to think about the kind of planning framework around that. There are kind of three key elements to this. There was an expectation from the Department of Health and Social Care that we'd develop an integrated care strategy and a really challenging timeline for that. So, our Integrated Care Partnership came together at the end of September and there was an expectation that we'd develop an initial integrated care strategy by the end of December. And so, you know, given that timeline, we were absolutely acknowledged that that would be a starter and that's something that we would need to kind of, you know, continue to evolve going forward. Simultaneous to that, those of you that have been involved with NHS planning, you'll know that each year we undertake detailed annual operational planning. And so, that's taking place at the moment and that's about us doing our forward planning each year with our NHS services in terms of detailed planning around that. There's also an expectation for us at this point to start to develop our NHS Five Year Joint Forward Plan. And so, that's where there was quite a lot of strategy and planning asks as a new Integrated Care Board coming together. If you'd like to move to the next slide, please. So, I thought what would also be helpful is just set a little bit of context about what the expectation was with respect to the integrated care strategy. So, the guidance expected us to consider a number of things. They expected us to think about our shared outcomes, to think about our focus on quality and how we would embed a quality improvement approach in our work, to particularly think about joint working. So, thinking about, you know, the strategy being a health and care plan and our plans around integration, building on the work today. And then also to think about data and information and how we would work more collaboratively in that space. There were a number of things that there was an ask for us to consider, things like how we take a personalised approach, how we work together to address health inequalities and improve population health, how we really take a preventative approach and how we take things forward. And then a number of other specific asks, thinking about health protection, research, innovation, a focus on all ages, so the kind of building on that kind of life cycle approach. So, there was an expectation that we thought about children and young people as well as adults and then moving on towards older people and end of life. A focus around workforce and then also other kind of health-related services. So, there was an expectation around breadth, I suppose, there in terms of thinking about those kind of things that we often describe as wider determinants of our health. So, the guidance and our partnership came together towards the end of September time, where the first thing that we did was really consider a refresh of our South Yorkshire Health Needs Assessment. So, those of you that are involved in Health and Wellbeing Boards, this is absolutely built upon the joint strategic needs assessment work that's undertaken in each place. So, what we did was we looked across that across South Yorkshire and there's actually a really good full report that you can kind of, that there's access to on our website around there. What else we did, and the team are going to take you through in a little bit more detail, was start to understand some of what people have already told us that mattered to them across South Yorkshire, appreciating the kind of level of engagement work that's been taking place across our partners over the last few years. And the team will talk a little bit more about that journey that we went on around there. There was a real approach with respect to thinking about all of our existing health and wellbeing strategies and plans across South Yorkshire. So, every place has a health and wellbeing strategy and an integrated health and care place plan. And so, what we wanted to do was ensure that in our approach, we actually really built upon those and the processes that were in place to inform and develop those. And then it was very much led by our Integrated Care Partnership towards the end of last year. So, I'm going to hand over now, if it's okay with everyone, to talk a little bit more in depth about the engagement approach.
Thanks, Mariana. Next slide, please. So, yeah, so as Mariana outlined, quite a heavy limitation on the work we could do around engagement, given the fact that the organisation came into being in July, the ICP was launched in September and then the requirement for the strategy to be launched in December time. And I'm kind of really pleased that we did manage to get to do some engagement with our communities despite those limitations. So, we very much went for a two-phased approach in essence to look at what our communities already told us and we had quite a number of sources to be able to do that. And then run a quite a short engagement event, but we did that in real time so that we were able to build in what our communities were telling us as the strategy was being created. So, if we could move to the next slide, please. So, just to outline that two-phase approach, so at the very beginning, when it was announced that it would be a recommendation for Integrated Care Partnerships to launch a strategy, my colleagues worked in collating 284 documents to kind of review what had been said because we know that our communities, they do say, please ask us something new, don't come back and ask us the same questions that you've asked over and over again. So, that insight was able to inform the strategy quite heavily. If we click the next slide, I'm really hopeful an animation will play.
We want to make sure our work is informed by the views of people in South Yorkshire. We've spent lots of time over the last two years engaging with our communities. We've used conversations with the public and analysed hundreds of documents submitted by our partners to understand what people have already told us.
The way I experience health and care is unique to me.
I want to live a healthier life, but I need more support to do that.
I don't know what I'm looking for when I'm supposed to be making sure I'm well.
It just feels like there's nowhere to go now when I have concerns about my health, care and wellbeing.
Life is expensive, health and wellbeing shouldn't be.
Providing more in my local community will make everything easier for me.
There isn't enough support for the people who care for me.
One of the biggest barriers to better health and wellbeing is access to information about how to live healthily and support for living in ill health. Access to services is one of the most commonly mentioned concerns of our patients and families, not least because it affects the quality of our patients' experience. Most people want to be in control of their own care and are frustrated by the barriers that prevent this. Please read the full report that was circulated with the papers if you haven't yet. Use this insight as a starting point to help shape the next stages of our ICP strategy development. We will ask as many people as possible across South Yorkshire during the month of November, what matters to you about your health and wellbeing? With a particular focus on underrepresented and socially excluded communities, our aim is to strengthen our understanding and be there for those who need us most.
Thank you, next slide, please, if you can. So, as you can see, a really rich source of information there and I think some of the views that we could all recognise, that our communities experience. So, then that led us to the second part of the approach, which was really the, let's go out and use November and the very start of December last year to ask our communities a really simple question of what matters to you about your health and your wellbeing? Next slide, please. So, the reason why we asked that question is because it's really inclusive. It doesn't exclude anybody from kind of their experiences, it kind of captures everybody that we can do. So, we used as many of our channels, groups, systems, processes, everybody that we knew across South Yorkshire to try and get those responses. I think in the end, I think we received about 500 responses of which probably represented a few more people because that covered focus groups that were able to take place during that time. And we're really grateful to those people who took part, especially those community groups as well, because it was quite a short notice ask, so they did put themselves out to do this. So, that's why we're grateful for that and obviously our Health Watch colleagues as well, who supported us through that process. And then we did use some social media targeting as well to try and reach some of those communities that the animation just mentioned. Next slide, please. So, those are some of the groups that supported this process. As you can see, quite a widespread across South Yorkshire, taking in a number of different demographics and a number of interests. And you can kind of get a real feel for the fact that they had those conversations about what mattered to their health and wellbeing through that. Next slide, please. And then just to take a bit of time to look through who we did hear from. So, a good split across South Yorkshire, offering Sheffield, Doncaster, Rotherham, Barnsley. As you can see, the majority responded to were female, which probably isn't unsurprising. And again, we did hear from minority groups as well and obviously fortunate to hear from some military veterans in Rotherham who discussed an event as well. And again, looking at the demographics of employment or whether people retired or student. Next slide, please. And then again, as you would perhaps expect, the demographics of who took part, like we say, this was an online survey, so it might have lent itself more to certain communities than it would otherwise. And clearly, had time been on our side, we'd have been able to spread that much more. But I think what we were able to do is, because we were tracking the responses live through the five weeks, we were able to see which communities were and weren't taking part and tried to change that as the process went on. Next slide, please. And again, I think it wouldn't be surprising to many people in this room, the demographics from an age perspective that we did hear from. So, clearly, that group of 45 to 74-year-olds made up over half of those that we heard from through the engagement event. Next slide, please. And then, yeah, just to touch upon one last element of demographics to see whether we did hear from people with long-term conditions or some of the conditions that regularly affect why people use the NHS care services. Next slide. And really just to touch on this, because I think, I mean, we've engaged with our colleagues in Health Watch about it and we've received their feedback too, which was in line with our own expectations around the limitations that we had placed on ourselves in this. So, I think clearly, I'm not going to go through all of those, but I think what we would say is, we were pleased to reach a threshold that kind of represented the level of views within our community so that we could have confidence in what the outcome of the engagement did say. Again, we were really grateful to those groups who took part because they did so off their own backs. So, yeah, that was important, but I think had we had more time, we would have probably done things in very different ways and different approaches. So, all in all, it met the expectations of what we were trying to achieve, but were we able to, we would have loved to have done much more. Next slide, please. So, hopefully, this one should play as well, which is kind of where we got to.
Throughout November and December, we've been seeking the views of the people of South Yorkshire, asking a simple question, what matters to you about your health and wellbeing? Thanks to the collective work of our partners, our initial integrated care strategy has started to take shape. We would like to thank you for all your continued feedback and recognise the work of our partners in the voluntary sector, for helping us gain deeper insights into seldom-heard groups and people with lived experience. This is what people in South Yorkshire told us. Access to care was by far the most popular topic. The need to have good access to GP services was the most important. Equal access is just as important, getting rid of the postcode lottery. Care also needs to be affordable, particularly residential care. We need to make sure care is offered in convenient locations, reducing the difficulties and costs of transportation. Concerns around accessing social care for themselves or a loved one was also highlighted. The quality of care received is also a priority for many. People want to be confident they will receive a good standard of treatment when they need it, seeing the same health and care professionals when possible. The second major issue was around communication. Some patients felt that there were inadequate attempts to explain their condition to them or to keep them in the loop around ongoing treatment. Others felt they were not being listened to by healthcare professionals. There was a recognition that anxiety and depression were conditions that were increasing for individuals and their families. There's a need for better support, but also we need to help prevent these conditions in the first place. People also perceive that parity of esteem between mental and physical health conditions is not yet the case, with the lack of support in place for some mental health conditions. People want more advice and guidance on recognising the signs and symptoms of long-term conditions, including cancer and dementia. People want more guidance on maintaining a healthier lifestyle and to improve or preserve good mental health. Maintaining a good work-life balance is important to many. Educating employers about the benefits of good work-life balance was identified as a need. There was a recognition that issues outside of the healthcare system can have a big impact on people's health and wellbeing. The biggest factor raised was the cost of living well. Things like accessing the gym or eating healthier foods are seen as being expensive. Other factors that were recognised included poor air quality, bad housing conditions, low-paid work, crime and antisocial behaviour and loneliness. Some of the beneficial wider determinants of health included access to outdoor spaces and good public amenities, living in pleasant neighbourhoods and participating within the wider community. There were a number of comments relating to accountability in different forms, including involving patients in decisions relating to their own personal care, involving patients and public in decisions that affect the way that the NHS provides care, and the importance of having strong systems of governance with a role for patients and public scrutinising local decisions. We want you to help us share our strategy more widely as we continue to listen and adapt to what people are telling us. Help us to share the strategy more widely for final feedback by the 6th of January 2023. With your help, we can turn our strategies and plans into action and real change for the people of South Yorkshire.
Now, if you could move to the next slide. I think where we've embedded this does make it difficult to do so. There you go. So, yeah, so really informative animation probably describes it better than I could do in person. But as you can see, it really did bring out the key themes from what people were telling us through the engagement exercise. And obviously, it won't be a surprise to people that access to care was really at the top of that, given that everything that people have gone through before the pandemic and during it, that's obviously the main message that came out. And obviously, those other ones as well, quality of care, improving mental health and wellbeing, support to live well, wider determinants and affordability. So, you'll see those things built into the Strategy Funding Centre. Next slide, please. Is this back to you?
Lovely. So, the engagement exercise that we've kind of described, we ran that for as long as we practically could. So, that came through, I think, early December, wasn't it, when that closed? And that was so that we could really take a kind of a live iterative process to ensuring that the feedback from the engagement influenced how we described the strategy. We do really see the strategy as a starter and that it will, you know, it will evolve and change over time and it will only get better by continuing to listen to people. And one of the things that Katie and Andy... To that ongoing commitment around engagement. So, I thought what I would do is just take you through a little bit of the content of the strategy next, if that's okay? So, if you'd like to go to the next slide, formal. So, this is what we are describing as a kind of a planner page. It's a little bit small, folks, so I apologise. We will share the slides and it is within the executive summary and also one of the front pages in the actual strategy document. But what you will see there is that we have, with the work through the partnership, developed a working vision. And what our vision is that everyone in our diverse community lives a happy, healthier life for longer in South Yorkshire. And that absolutely is built upon all the visions that we have described in our health and wellbeing strategies and place plans across South Yorkshire. Our goals are that working towards enabling people to have healthier, longer lives, thinking about fairer outcomes for all, so how we address health inequalities together, and then also that access to quality services, because that's one of the key themes that came through from our engagement work. The shared outcomes, so we're on the green stripe now, the shared outcomes came from work across the partnership with our Health and Wellbeing Boards, so they really align to the aspirations that are set out in our Health and Wellbeing Strategies. So, starting with enabling the best starting life for children and young people, so that's a focus around early development, and then enabling people to live healthier and longer lives and improving health and wellbeing, particularly for those with the greatest needs, the fastest. So, there's real emphasis around how do we work together to address health inequalities? Supporting the development of safe, strong and vibrant communities, so that's thinking about, you know, those wider determinants and where people live and how important those environmental factors are in terms of contributing to people's health and wellbeing. And then supporting people with respect to the skills, resources they need to thrive. So, that's how do we work together to enable people to have the knowledge, experience, confidence and skills to be able to support themselves and think about their own health and wellbeing? The bold ambitions, these are areas where we felt like as a partnership, we had an opportunity to potentially work together and align our work to be able to make a bigger difference together. So, in there, there's a focus on children, young people, and that's particularly thinking about how we work together to enable children in South Yorkshire to be school-ready. The second one is about acting differently and strengthening and accelerating our approach to prevention. And within that, there's a particular focus on smoking. But what we also really acknowledge there is actually the wider determinants and the place, the part they play and therefore the kind of importance of our partnership working with respect to that. Working together to increase economic participation so that we can work towards having a fair, inclusive and sustainable economy. That's what's really thinking about, how we work together to enable those that are furthest away from our labour market to be able to come into and stay into work. So, we're thinking about people that have physical, mental health, long-term conditions, people with learning disabilities and autism, and even, you know, those that are care leavers within our system, you know, what is it that we can do that can enable them to come into, participate in our economy or in other meaningful activities? And the last but equally important bold ambition there is about a focus on our workforce. So, that's a collaborative focus on our entire workforce, so thinking about health and care, voluntary care sector, paid and unpaid. voluntary care sector, paid and unpaid, and you know, what is it that we can do together to support them? And there's a commitment in terms of the development of a workforce strategy for South Yorkshire. There's also a commitment of us looking at how we work together to become an anti-racist system and what steps we take to enable that. The pink line at the bottom, we have described as our joint commitments. And as a partnership, we thought really carefully about these, because these were about what is it that we need to do, working together differently in order to be able to enable the delivery of our integrated care strategy? So starting with the leadership approach that we have and how we are bolder and more visible in the approach that we take, thinking about our approach to tackle systemic discrimination broadly as well as having that focus on anti-racism, thinking about how we make best use of our resources. So how do we ensure that we consider our resources collectively? And how we ensure that we utilise them to take more preventative approaches and to support those where we know they've got greater needs? How do we ensure that our building on our work today in places that we take a more joined-up service delivery? So that's across health and care, building on the work we've done to develop integrated teams. How do we ensure that we have an ongoing approach which listens to local people and which actively involves them in the way that we work so that we can actually take forward our plans with co-production where it makes sense to do so? And then how do we create a culture across South Yorkshire where we learn from each other? Where we ensure that proven innovation we embed and adopt in the way that we work and where that we work with our kind of research partners to be able to take forward new innovative approaches? And then underneath those, we've actually got a number of what we've described as enabling plans. And some of those are really key in terms of things like our approaches around estates, integration, the things that we're doing to deliver improved access across our services. And there's more detail around those in the kind of full strategy document. Go to the next slide please. So the next thing I thought would be helpful would just to talk about where we are now in terms of next steps. So we are very thankful for the broad amount of feedback that we received during that period in January and since then. So the Integrated Care Strategy Engagement Draft has made its way through all of our health and wellbeing boards, a number of different forums across South Yorkshire, and we have been taking on board that feedback as it's come through from our partners. We've got a commitment to ongoing engagements, very much supported by the partnership. And some of that, we're already starting to look at how we take forward in terms of informing our joint forward plan, and we'll talk a bit about that at the moment. We are in a process where we're looking to launch this initial integrated care strategy for South Yorkshire, appreciating that we see this as a kind of a start of our journey. We've also started to bring together our planning to develop our NHS Joint Forward Plan. And that really is one of the things that we want to use as a shared delivery plan for our integrated care strategy, particularly with respect to the NHS contributions. So how does the NHS contribute to the delivery of our strategy? If I could have the next slide please. I thought it might be helpful to therefore move on to just talk a little bit about the NHS Joint Forward Plan, given that it's going to be one of the key vehicles for supporting the delivery of the integrated care strategy. And it's absolutely going to be one of the things that we're going to be looking to, how we engage with the Joint Health Oviedo and Scrutiny Committee in future around. So I thought it'd be helpful just to set out what the national expectations are around the Joint Forward Plan. So the national guidance is an expectation that integrated care boards, so in our case NHS South Yorkshire, and NHS Trust work together to prepare our first joint forward plan. And that it needs to act as a shared delivery plan for our integrated care strategy. And it needs to cover how we will arrange and provide NHS services that will meet the population needs, both mental health and physical needs, and that it will align to our joint strategic needs assessment or in our case, our refreshed South Yorkshire Health Needs Assessment and also our health and wellbeing strategies that we've got in place across South Yorkshire. Though it will need to include the NHS universal commitments, and what it means by that is the things that were described as expectations in the NHS Long-Term Plan. And that it will also need to describe how it is as an integrated care system we will deliver our core purpose. So the core purpose around the integrated care system is about how do we work together to improve population health, address health inequalities, also think about the added value, you know, in terms of efficiency and productivity, but also thinking about how do we add wider socio-economic value as well as an NHS? It will need to enable us to dispatch a number of legislative duties, and I will show those at the moment, but I won't take you through all of those in detail, but some of those are ones that we are well aware of with respect to, they are already statutory requirements of NHS organisations. So there's an opportunity for our strategy to support us with the delivery of those. There's an expectation that we develop an engagement draft, so an initial working draft of our joint forward plan by the end of March time. And that actually we work towards a final draft by the end of June. And that gives, there's been an acknowledgement, I think, that that gives a sufficient amount of time there for thinking about how we engage in the development of our joint forward plan. So it's really good timing to join you today to talk about it. There were a number of principles that were set out nationally that need to underpin our joint forward plan. One being that it needs to be fully aligned to our system ambition. So in our case, that's the ambition that we've set out in our integrated care strategy around supporting the delivery of longer, healthier lives for people in South Yorkshire. And then it also needs to ensure that it builds on our existing local strategies and plans as well as reflecting the NHS commitments. So we'll need to be working really closely with our health and wellbeing boards and our place partnerships to enable that. The expectation is that joint forward plans are delivery focused and so that we are setting out, particularly in the first year, ensuring that we're aligning with our operational planning in our NHS. So you know, our delivery elements, particularly for the first 12 months. If I could have the next slide please. So this is why you'd be pleased to hear, I'm not going to take you through all of these in detail. But what these are, are the kind of the legislative requirements that there's an expectation around in our joint forward plan. And that there's an opportunity for us to demonstrate how we dispatch these. So they include promoting integration, they include listening and involving the public, they include things like climate change, sustainability, so there's kind of a breadth there. Next slide please. The other areas, and I promise this is my last slide. The other areas where there's an expectation for us to cover in our joint forward plan is for us to ensure there's a focus around workforce. There's alignment with our operational planning in terms of performance. So thinking about what the public told us is important to them in terms of access to services. You know, having a focus on how we improve our delivery against some of those access performance standards. Digital data technology in estate, so some of those like key enabling things will need to feature in our joint forward plan, as will some of the delivery elements like procurement. And then how we will deliver some of the things that we've described in our integrated care strategy in terms of enabling an approach that's about population health and improving our population health outcomes. And lastly there, dispatching our duty with respect to that kind of wider socio-economic development opportunity and the contribution the NHS can make to that. I'm going to hand over now, if it's okay, just for the last few slides, which is really about continuing that journey around engagement and what it is that's happening right now to support informing the development of our joint forward plan.
So again, there are limitations, as there were in the previous round, in terms of the space of time we've got in terms of involving people. But what we wanted to do was really build on what we'd already heard in terms of the people we'd heard from with the integrated care strategy and also the documents that we'd analysed at the start of that process. So we worked with our health watchers in particular and looked at how can we make sure we hear from a broader cross-section of our communities? So we've worked with Healthwatch and we've come up with a bit of a mechanism for ensuring we hear from a broad range of our underserved communities. That's the key part of our engagement on the joint forward plan. But we're also making sure we support our programmes. So these are things like the people who lead on improvements for emergency care, for example, or for primary care or for mental health, and working with them to make sure that parts of the plan that they're helping shape are informed by patient and public voice as well. And then the final thing we've said we'll do is build on the conversation that we've already had and go out there again and say, look, if you didn't have a chance to comment last time, please tell us your views now, and if you did and you want to expand on them more, particularly in terms of some of the key themes that came out last time around access and quality, please do that. And then if I just, there's just a couple more slides that take you through what we're doing with the Healthwatch. This is the narrative that we designed to help people understand what we want to hear from them is in the paper, so I won't read it to you. Again, we've worked with Healthwatch to help ensure that that's good commentary. Next slide please. So these are the inclusion groups that we've said to Healthwatch. It would be really great to be able to hear from a number of these groups, if possible, all of them across South Yorkshire. There'll be inclusion groups that you're probably typically familiar with, people that we know that we don't hear from unless we specifically go to them. And then finally, final slide please. We've looked at our communities and we've looked at which communities in South Yorkshire are in the top 20% most deprived communities in the country. And then we've mapped that against ethnicity as well, so that we make sure we hear from some of the most deprived communities who have the largest populations, minority ethnic populations, as well as some of the communities who have the predominantly white British areas of deprivation. So what that lists is for the Sheffield and the Barnsley ones, we gave them that 20% to the health watchers and said, who do you think you can hear from in this time scale? And they're the communities that they've identified. For Rotherham and Doncaster, they haven't got back to me yet about who they will be targeting. So that's just the list of the 20% communities that we've passed over to them. And I think that's everything. Over to you for questions.
Thank you very much indeed. Very comprehensive presentation, thank you. You've already answered a couple of my questions, so that's excellent, thank you. Members, we don't have a published finish time for this meeting. I just wanted to check before we go on whether either of you have any time limit on your time here? Are you happy just to continue until we feel that we're satisfied? In which case, we're open for questions, councillor Ennis.
Yeah, yeah, thanks Chair. I'd just like to begin by congratulating the officers on this mammoth task that they've been set in such a short time scale. The amount of correspondence and documents that they've processed to try and get us where we are today has been phenomenal. And I don't think any of us can disagree with the findings they've already found from the consultation process that's already been undertaken. Because it's common sense, all the points that's been raised need to be part of the five-year plan. There's absolutely no argument with that. The one thing I would draw attention to is the fact that the number of responses we've had, which is very, very low, 1.4 million people, four, five or six hundred responses, whatever it is. And to say, I think it was on page, let me just look at my notes now. Yeah, on page five of the agenda pack, what's important, what matters to you about health and wellbeing? And it said that it's decided that a 95% level confidence level is achieved from these 400 responses. How can we actually say that that is a 95% confidence level, if you see what I mean? And as I've already indicated, we've done really well here. We've not got very long before we actually have to bring the joint forward plan forward as an actual document end of June. And I would like to see us to be able to be, to achieve that 95% confidence level. I would like us to get a lot more responses, shall we say. And from my perspective, Healthwatch in Barnsley is a fantastic organisation. And we as a council, Oviedo and Scrutiny Committee, depend a lot on the collaboration that we have with Healthwatch. I know that's also the case with the Integrated Care Board and things like that. But we can't underestimate the role that Healthwatch and the voluntary sector and the charities providing in actually bolstering healthcare and wellbeing through our places like Barnsley.
Thank you. So firstly, thank you for the warm words at the start, because I think it has been a huge amount of work. So thank you for recognising that. And I think we would absolutely agree with all the points that you made. I think we were thankful just to get over that critical line of how many responses are a kind of a minimum that we needed to make sure that it was representative of what our community said. But we would all agree that that is the bare minimum that we should aspire to. And going forward, we'll look to add to that comprehensively. I think your second point about the Healthwatch is absolutely right as well. We've kind of put a lot of our time into building those relationships, because obviously they existed when clinical commissioning groups were there. But clearly now that NHS South Yorkshire is in existence, we want to build a South Yorkshire relationship with them. So myself and Katie were really fortunate to be invited to an away day that the Healthwatch has had a couple of months ago, they came together in Yorkshire Sculpture Park, where I think me and Katie were the only people who didn't work for Healthwatch who got an invite, which was, I don't know if that's a positive or a negative thing, to be honest. But those ties now, I think, are really, really strong and we see them as one of our key partners. So I think we absolutely take on board that, that Healthwatch Barnsley and also the other three Healthwatches, they're a fantastic partner for us and we hold them in really high regard.
If I could just come back briefly Chair, I think that's fantastic. And I mean, I used to attend, when we had the old CCG in Barnsley, I used to attend the board meetings. And Healthwatch was always given a very prominent role in the CCG meetings. They always wanted instant feedback from the Healthwatch, but they then wanted more detailed feedback on issues that were being discussed, et cetera. And obviously I see that very much as a blueprint, shall we say, for how the South Yorkshire Integrated Care Board will operate once it's been decided on the five-year plan.
Could I come back to that very quickly? Again, completely agree. One of the Healthwatches do sit on the board and then they do feedback to the other three, but we take it a step further and myself and Katie join them for their monthly catch-up. We'd probably take up too much of their time than they actually allow us, but we need to stop doing that so much. But yeah, and we're sending them regular briefings on everything that's discussed and everything that's talked about. And crucially, the opportunity to ask us lots of questions outside of meetings so that they're not waiting for those four or six weeks to get responses. They've got an open line to us.
Thanks Chair. I'd just like to echo as well, I think the strategy has some fantastic points written in. It's got, you can see that it's got every area's priorities there. And I think it's got really listed through the action points in the strategy, some really fantastic things to work on. Just building on the other councillors' comments about the engagement. Obviously, you had three months in total, was it two months, three months? Five weeks, okay. Even so, we just did a, we've had to consult with, for some primary care, real estate in Doncaster. And we managed to get over a thousand people in like two weeks, three weeks. I think there is something about, because when you talk about all this, it's very much on social media and online. And because the, you know, the JFP is coming up super, super fast, I'm just wondering what your plans are to engage more physically? And I do know that there was focus groups on there, but with my Doncaster hat on, of course, a lot of them were from Barnsley and two from Doncaster. So just wondering how you decide those samples as well?
Shall I come in first or I'll let you come back? I mean, again, absolutely agree. I think we've recently run a consultation in Sheffield about GP health centres where we have 5,000 responses to that. And so you can see kind of the level of feeling for that. So there certainly is a differentiation between engaging with people on something that they probably think directly affects them and something that is much more widespread and their hopes and dreams for the future of... and something that is much more widespread and their hopes and dreams for the future of health and care. So I would absolutely agree that on some occasions, it's much easier to try and garner that interest as well. And it also touches on the points that we just raised as well about the fact that it was probably the bare minimum, that response level that we would have accepted. But we have built that into our future plans for this next period, so if I bring in Katie to touch on that, if that's okay?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say it's about, some of the problem that we've had is about invest, people feeling invested and people feel very invested in their GP practice. Or, you know, I think we're expecting to hear from more people in our cancer work that we're doing now because people, whereas what matters to you about your health and wellbeing is very ethereal, isn't it? And so that was some of the challenge, I think. Also in terms of the focus groups, again, some of the challenge was the time scales. So we worked with our Health Watches, but again, due to the limitations, what they'd got in place. You know, Barnsley had got a lot of established groups that they could attend, whereas at Doncaster, I know there were some of them that they'd finished for Christmas or they were having Christmas parties, so we couldn't go and talk to them. So that's where some of the disparities come from in terms of who we spoke to then. But this time we've got a much more planned approach with the Health Watches and they're very much leading us in terms of who they can speak to. And I think there's a commitment to attend at least 10 focus groups each, targeting some of the communities that we've identified. So I think we're expecting a better breadth and a better equal split, so to speak, in terms of who they speak to this time as well. In terms of the sort of the broader stuff and the numbers, I think we have to sort of take a view of where do we put our resource? So we could do sort of the on street or the telly survey type things so that we get that broad mass of numbers. And then we sort of weigh that up against, because obviously there's a cost implication. Or, you know, having heard from a section, not a big section, but you know, 500 odd people with the free means. Can we build on that again, using some of our free means, like the networks that we've got and the staff bulletins? And, you know, we've got a huge workforce in the NHS and health and care, haven't we, in South Yorkshire? Can we do more building on that and then use our monetary resource to support the VCSE work and the Health Watch work? And really hearing from those underserved communities? So I think that's the balance that we're always trying to play off, if that makes sense.
That's brilliant, it absolutely totally makes sense. I guess I was just wondering as well, like how you said, like, you know, obviously people are really engaged in their GP surgery and in oncology care and things like that. But I think maybe it's how we describe what an integrated care partnership, because this is really, 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 really important. And it's, it underpins all of these things, you know, prevention and future cancer cases and being, you know, reducing your risk of other health things, which will reduce your risk of needing the GP ultimately. And like, how many people really want to know about an integrated care partnership? I guess it's like, can, like, it is about, like, can we start making sure that people know that it is about stuff that they're passionate about, like stuff about road safety and things like that? As a council, that's like the bread and butter of my work, complaining about cars and air pollution and stuff. We should be able to get more, yeah, thank you.
Could I come back on that? I'm very grateful that the Chair decided to describe what the ICS, ICP and ICB was at the start because it is a very difficult landscape to describe to people. And obviously whoever was in charge of coming up with the acronyms did have a sense of humour when they created it for us. But I think you're absolutely right, I mean, we do have 72,000 health and care staff across South Yorkshire. That's a huge voice amongst our community. So what we need to do in two ways, which we haven't yet succeeded in is we need them all singing from the same hymn sheet. And obviously a big part of that role is mine to get that narrative and ensure that everybody knows what an ICB is and what the purpose is and what the purpose of the strategy is. But equally making sure that they've got that voice and clearly we didn't achieve it very well in the first time around because we, like I say, 500 responses from the whole of South Yorkshire and we've got 72,000 health and care staff alone. But if we can get them talking about it to their friends and family and their relatives, we'll reach a huge number of people across South Yorkshire. So for me, that's a really big challenge because I kind of see that group as our, it's a 72,000 strong group of ambassadors for health and care right across the region. And as Mariana touched through, we've kind of planned on the page, if we can get them talking about some of those messages with our wider communities. I think half of the battle is won there.
Thank you. I've just got, just to follow up on some of the questions about engagement and then councillor Ennis, is you're still on engagement as well? So just to follow up on a bit of that, thank you to Sarah and Geoff for the questions you've already asked. Really, I think it's really important to understand the processes that have gone into the engagement. It was an incredibly short time scale, but I'm really interested to see how, what specifically you were able to do to reach minority and protected characteristic groups, ethnic groups, hard to reach groups within that short time scale? What mechanisms you've got already built in that you can deploy, you know, really quickly in that kind of short time scale? Because you've got the same thing again now really with the next round. And also then, in real terms, how has the public helped to shape this strategy? And how will the public actually help to shape the future plan? So perhaps if there were examples of things wherein the engagement for the strategy, where you heard things from the public that have actually changed the direction of something or influenced the way that that strategy has been, what the priorities within it have been drawn up? Were there any surprises? Was everything exactly as you expected based on previous engagements and knowledge that you had? Or have the public actually steered things in a different direction?
Yeah, in terms of the hearing from the underserved communities, we've obviously got quite a lot of mechanisms in place from existing relationships through our CCG colleagues who've come and joined us within the ICB. So we try and build upon those. So like I say, Health Watch is one of our key, one of the key ways that we reach out to our underserved communities because they have existing relationships. Similarly, the voluntary sector, you know, they've got the established relationships. When we've done a lot of insight work, working with the voluntary sector, we're often told that a number of our underserved communities don't trust our badges, they don't trust authorities, so actually it works quite well to work with the voluntary sector. So for this particular exercise, we worked with the South Yorkshire Community Foundation and they reached out to a number of the communities. Again, because they've got those relationships, they're a grant giving organisation and they were able to make contributions to the communities who contributed to help with their organisations as well. So that's one of the key mechanisms we've used. Going forwards, we're massively looking to build on that. We're having conversations within the ICB around how we make sure we hear from people in an ongoing way. How, particularly how we hear from underserved communities and that helps us with our health inequalities, knowledge and insight. And, you know, not just what the data tells us about why people in these communities have suffered health inequalities. Actually, what do people tell us as well, what's the qualitative things that we can hear from them that helps us plan, better plan our services for them? So it's very much a, this is what we've got in place for now, again, sort of suffering from being a relatively new organisation. How can we build on that and make that better going forwards? In terms of, and you'll come on to the, how it impacted in the real terms, in terms of the strategy. One of the best things that I saw was Mariana in planning for the joint forward plan has given all of our colleagues who will be contributing various parts to it, a template to fill in. And I think it's the second question is how will this help improve access and quality? And that's there as a result of that being the key theme that's come out of the early engagement. So we're making sure that we absolutely build on what people have told us in terms of the development of the next stage. You've probably got other examples.
Yeah, I thought just to add to that second part of your question there about what we heard and how that influenced the development of the strategy. So one of the things that we did was put in during the period of starting to develop the draft, kind of weekly calls with respect to the analysis of what was coming out from what people were telling us. And that enabled us to ensure that we were working with the kind of live information feeding into the strategy. One of the reasons why we've got a key goal around in quality and access to services is because it's absolutely one of the key themes that came out of the engagement work. So the actual engagement report's got a really nice kind of infographic and in there it's the size of the words or depending on how much that comes through in the responses and access to care and quality care are the things that really come through. So we've identified that as a key goal in the strategy. Also, when we're thinking about that shared outcome around improving healthy lives for longer and particularly those with greatest needs, there's a little focus in there around people with mental health conditions, learning disabilities, et cetera. Because we know that's one of the areas where we've got inequalities that we need to address. So there were a number of different things that came through from that feedback that we've threaded into. Generally, they were more kind of cross cutting themes. And I think, you know, there's an element of the specific feedback around quality and access that we are absolutely taking forward into. Well, where does our key area of focus need to be in terms of our NHS joint forward plan? And so Katie's right, we've identified a number of leads across our system that lead all the different components of care. So thinking about primary care, thinking about urgent emergency care, thinking about mental health, you know, because supporting mental health and wellbeing was another one of the key themes, wasn't it, that came out of our engagement? So we're actually working with those people that are kind of specialists, leaders in our different fields across health to describe what is it that we need to set out in our joint forward plan that's about improving access and quality of care for those areas that we know are really important to people. And, you know, that's all the way across the life cycle from kind of, you know, access to mental health service for children and young people right through to kind of, you know, at the other end of the scale, thinking about palliative and end of life care.
Thank you very much. Just to follow up on that, just on the strategy itself, how frequently will that be refreshed? And what would be the process for that? And is it an ongoing conversation with communities and individuals? Or will there be, you know, will there be future engagement exercises that are undertaken at particular points? Or is it perpetual? And what engagement exercises are planned in the short and medium term on that? And just related to that, on the forward plan, on the delivery, how flexible will that be in terms of, you know, if the strategy priorities and goals do need to evolve? How flexible then is the delivery plan to work with that? I mean, anything could happen and it has happened in the last three years, something that massively changed priorities and needs and goals. So how flexible can that be in the future?
Should we take two halves of those questions again? And I might bring yourself in, but I think what we want to be really clear on is, yes, we spoke to our communities sort of in early winter. And again, we plan to speak to them again very shortly. But we don't just want to pop up and be an organisation that just speaks to people when we need something. So we do want that ongoing dialogue with our communities from this point forward. And I think what we did was on the first of July last year, when we formed, we launched our Start With People strategy, which is our kind of our strategy for engaging with our communities. And that will be refreshed the first of July this year as well. So we'll see how we use it and we'll see how effectively we were. And we'll adapt that to how we do our ongoing engagement with our communities. So I think the reassurance we can give everybody here today is that we take that very, very seriously. So and we want to be that organisation that is constantly hearing from our communities, not just about what we want to talk to them about, but what they want to tell us. And obviously the partnership that we've touched upon with Health Watch a number of times today is a big part of that. Is there anything you'd want to add to that?
Probably just that the governance processes are in place within the ICB as well, that the, what we hear from our communities does get fed up to the decision makers as well. So I think if there are key things that we're hearing from our communities that aren't within the strategies, we will be able to influence that as well. There's a real clear commitment from the ICB and it's within the Start With People strategy that we know that we need to hear from our citizens to enable us to be able to deliver the best services that we can. So I think even if the document itself isn't being refreshed, we'll be able to influence the delivery within it in terms of what's important to our communities.
And I can reiterate that as well in terms of from the Integrated Care Partnership. So, you know, there is that kind of ongoing commitment with respect to enabling ongoing engagement. And that actually through the way that we translate the strategy into delivery, that's why we've got a relatively high level of flexibility relay in terms of ensuring that we're listening to people and that we take a where possible kind of co-production approaches to enable that delivery. With respect to the joint forward plan, there's an expectation that we do review that kind of annually alongside our operational planning. So we already do kind of annual planning. A lot of the annual operational planning for the NHS for this coming year is about recovering, improving access to services. So absolutely lines up with what people have told us is important to them. I think your point around ensuring that we're building flexibility is a really important one. And I think, you know, that's going to be our kind of, our collective responsibility really, isn't it? To ensure that we can maintain our kind of strategic direction in a way that actually really follows what people tell us is important to them.
Yeah, thanks Chair, my question is a follow up to your line of questioning actually, in that what performance framework will be developed to monitor the implementation of the strategy? And can Josh be excited on it please? Because we need to be part of that process.
That's a great question. So we have been doing some work with the Integrated Care Partnership and our kind of public health analysis team. Because we know that our health and wellbeing boards across the patch already monitor a number of really important outcomes right across that sphere of children and young people all the way through. And so what we've been doing is looking at those indicators that support delivery of those shared outcomes and developing an outcomes framework. And so we shared some of the start of that with our Integrated Care Partnership when it last met, but we see that as a bit of a continuing journey. We're also really keen to look at what the metrics are that underpin our bold ambitions. So the things that we've said that we will work together and focus on more closely. How is it that we measure that we're starting to make a difference in those things? So one of the ones I referenced was the children being school ready, so we know we've got indicators. We know that actually we don't fare as well as we could in relation to that, we're not awful across South Yorkshire, but we don't fare as well as we could. We know that there are big ranges with respect to those children that have free school meals. So we know there are inequalities and that's where we really want to make a difference. Likewise, from the smoking, there is an indicator that we've already identified. So we're working behind the scenes to look at how we develop that outcomes framework. And we'd be absolutely open to be having another conversation with you as, you know, our kind of joint health overview and scrutiny committee about how you support us with that scrutiny role around how we translate our strategy into delivery.
Thanks for that Chair, just one general point to do with our deprived communities across South Yorkshire. Generally, people are living longer, but they're not living in good health longer, they'll live shorter in good health. And that has got to be one of the main targets of the Integrated Care Board to tackle these inequalities before they develop in individuals. And so that people actually can live longer and live in healthy lifestyle for longer periods as well.
Just to come back on that as well, whilst we didn't hear from a massive range of people within the exercise that we did, what I was really pleased to see was that a large majority of the people that we heard from were people who were living with long term conditions and disabilities. And so we know we were reaching those people who really do want us to make a difference to their healthy, to their sort of healthy life expectancy.
Thanks Chair, I've got two questions really, one leading on from that one really, which is about, you know, you talked through your presentation about the NHS commitment and being able to deliver and building that relationship with the NHS delivery and that ours needs to align. And I always feel a little bit like local authorities and social care are very good at sort of prevention and NHS is a bit more acute sort of thing. So I was just wondering, like, how is that relationship going to be built so that we can get this prevention priority?
That's a really good point. Often I think, you know, when we use the word prevention, sometimes we kind of mean different things, don't we? When we're thinking about, you know, local authorities and health. And I think, you know, one of the things that we're really keen to ensure that we And I think, you know, one of the things that we're really keen to ensure that we focus on in our joint forward plan is how we take a preventative approach. You know, how do we take a personalised and preventative approach so that we can support people to delay those long term conditions? And, you know, when they have a, a long term condition, we can support them to delay the onset of a further long term condition because we know that we have more people that are living with multiple long term conditions, don't we, as well? So it's how do we at every step in that journey, take a preventative approach? So some of the work that we're doing to develop, excuse me, to develop our joint forward plan is very much about how do we strengthen that? And that's one of the reasons why it's also one of the bold ambitions in our integrated care strategy is that we know we need to really accelerate and strengthen that and look at how we act together in relation to that across the NHS and local authorities.
I'd like to follow up on that as well actually, and just explore a little bit more the, with, with integration now. I mean, I, I see that, I'm sure colleagues do as well, as a great opportunity for the NHS and local authorities to work much, much, much closer together. And in that must come the topic of funding. And so an example this year on our adult health and social care policy committee, we're now under a committee system in Sheffield, as I'm sure you're aware. And each policy committee has been tasked with finding savings this year. Each policy committee has been charged with its own budget and setting a balanced budget for the next year. And within that, we've looked at potential savings or cuts, to use the proper word, which are not palatable to us and don't sit with our intentions for prevention and early intervention and the work we can do around that and people keeping well as we're referring to it in Sheffield. So we've, we've been, you know, we've been challenged to look at potentially cutting things that would undermine our own policies and strategies within the city council. And our response to that has been, can we ask the NHS to plug this gap and help us to deliver this? And I want to know sort of to what extent do you feel that as a partnership? And that if we're, if we're saying as a local authority, we can no longer deliver this in the way that we feel will actually have an outcome, you know, can we come and, and, you know, and come to some kind of arrangement whereby the same priority from both sides is, is co-funded?
I think one of the, one of the reasons we took quite some time in the Integrated Care Partnership to describe those joint commitments was because we know that we're kind of entering into a period where it is, it is going to be more challenging for health and care from a financial perspective. And that actually we want to ensure that collectively we make the best use we possibly can of our resources. And so that's one of the reasons why we kind of took the time to identify working together around resources as one of our joint commitments. And one of the things that we're looking to do going forward is think about, well, how do we consider that further together? And so we will be looking at how we work with the Integrated Care Partnership to start to think about how do we consider that in real terms? You know, what does that, what does that look like? But acknowledging that one of the things we need to do to enable that is really understand each other more with respect to those kind of, I suppose, the financial systems that we work within, because obviously, you know, it's different, isn't it, from a health and care perspective? There's something about, you know, understanding those arrangements that we have in place for each, understanding the constraints that we have to work within. And it's, you know, we've got some good examples, haven't we, in South Yorkshire, where we have pulled under some of those arrangements that we were able to make together. We have pulled some of our resources and made some of those kind of joint integrated service delivery. And I think how is it that we learn from those? And how is it that we act in line with our joint commitment to think about the approach that we take from a prevention perspective? Don't know whether I've got anything to add.
Come back in. I mean, and I think this is the fundamental thing really about the Integrated Care Board and the Integrated Care Partnership is that it's, it's a very new way of doing, doing the world, but, but it really is the future for this partnership working by working together and bringing those organisations together. I've just spent 14 to 15 years working in acute hospitals, big teaching hospitals across the country. They've got big challenges which they can't solve themselves, but by bringing all these partners together, we can start to solve some of those challenges that everybody has. And, and whilst I can't comment on the funding arrangements that you alluded to, those will be part of the solutions as well. So, so we're at very early days obviously, but I think this is quite an exciting time for health and care if we can get this right. And what the strategy does say is that we can't afford to be back here in three or four years asking ourselves exactly the same questions. This, this strategy that we're here to talk about today, clearly there's deliverables between the 2028 and 2030, but, but we've got to get it right for these communities now, I think. So I think we would, we would agree with your point that, the wider point that this partnership working will be the solution for a lot of the challenges for health and care in our wider community space.
I think just one more comment on that really, that just, that social and green prescribing are a prime example for me. So these are things that the local authority supports and seeks to support and seeks to provide for. Before, we referred to them as social and green prescribing, that were things we did anyway, of course, weren't they? The thing, you know, parks, leisure centres, swimming lessons for kids, you know, all these things, which are now, which now come under this sort of tag of social or green prescribing. Now, I, I don't, I don't see that there's actually any money available for social and green prescribing. It's, it's stuff that happens and a patient might present at their GP surgery with an anxiety about something or something that's not, you know, that doesn't really need a health intervention and, and they get signposted to something that is generally provided by the local authority or the voluntary sector. So there I think is, you know, I'm sure you're already thinking about it, but there's a challenge, I think, from the local authority's point of view, that we need as much support as possible to provide those things. If, you know, if, if, if the system of prevention and early intervention relies on social and green prescribing, we need to be able to continue to provide those things and to support our voluntary organisations in providing those things. So I, to me, that's a really key player in the whole joint working and integration. And hopefully something that you're thinking about might be interesting to come back and have a discussion about that at some point, about how, how that works. Perhaps better at, at place level, I don't know, but colleagues might be interested in that as well.
Just to say, we do certainly have a social prescribing lead within the ICB and they, they have been meeting, I think they, they predate the ICB actually, in terms of a partnership approach across South Yorkshire. And I think there are some commitments around social prescribing for primary care networks as well. So it might be worth doing it at this scale because of the nuances of the sort of the network community sized approach. So yeah, I think we should, we'll definitely take that away, won't we?
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, and especially when we talk about like the nuances of networking and, and what's going on across different places. I find just in my role at Doncaster, it's a bit frustrating that data, we tend to use data from all different sources. So sometimes, like for example, most of my ward is on the deprived list there. I don't know if that's in order, but sometimes it's always in different order, the most deprived, depending on who did the data. And I just think it's really important that we're all using the same data source across South Yorkshire for all the things that we're doing. And just wondering if you know which kind of data sources you're pulling from.
I think that's one of the things where coming together as NHS South Yorkshire gives us an opportunity, because what we're doing is bringing together the people that have got the kind of knowledge, expertise from a kind of a public health analysis and a BI perspective, to be able to ensure that we're taking that kind of common approach. So our South Yorkshire Population Health Needs Assessment is actually one of the things where we've worked really collaboratively with each of our places to draw together some of that data. I think, you know, in some cases in there, we have had to refer to some things that are kind of not at South Yorkshire level. And part of that was that when we did look at some of the South Yorkshire stuff, it was really old. And so that's where we've had to take some of the kind of, I think there's a couple of references and some indicators to the kind of England average rather than the kind of South Yorkshire, but it's where we've had to kind of do that. Actually, our data was from some time ago. But we're very much bringing together those teams so that we can take a consistent approach in that and we're drawing from the same kind of data sources. What we are looking to describe in the joint forward plan is some of the kind of data, digital intelligence developments that we're looking to take forward. And some of that will be very much about how we develop a, a platform that brings together some of that quantitative information, but also the qualitative stuff, the insight, you know, how do we make that so that's really usable to inform the work that we're shaping? So I think that, you know, I think there's a, a great opportunity there for NHS South Yorkshire to take a more consistent approach and to support places with that.
That's brilliant. That sounds great. And I'll just building on from what you were saying about how you make the qualitative stuff really accessible as well, you know? The strategy that we've read through, is, is that for the public or is that for us, like as in policymakers?
So, so that's a really, really good question. So clearly the strategy is 76 pages long. So we're not anticipating or asking all of our communities to read every single word of that. We have created an eight page version of it. Again, we're not asking all of our communities to read all of that, although it's available to them. And clearly we've, we've made an easy read version and we've, we've designed a version on our website that can be translated into something like 50 languages, of which 20 can be read aloud to people. But kind of what we're asking this week, and you might start to see it appear tomorrow, is we're, we're asking our communities just what do they want for the, the next generation in South Yorkshire? So using kind of a hashtag, ourfutureSouthYorkshire launches tomorrow with, with some contributions. And we're really asking all of our communities to really just contribute to say, if it's on social media or if it's a picture that a child paints or, or whatever it is, what does South Yorkshire look like for you in the future? And, and we've kind of chosen that because as, as Mariana talked about in, when she described the strategy and the plan on the page, really those first thousand days for a child is so, so important. So we've, we've taken that idea and, and we really just want people to focus on that element of it. And then we kind of give the messages around the strategy on top of that. So, so it's very much an inclusive way of trying to get people thinking about, well, what does South Yorkshire look like in, in 2050 for the people that, that live and work here and, and sort of the one year olds of today, when they're 28, if I've done my maths correctly, what, what does it look like for them? So, so that's the conversation we really want to happen sort of this weekend and in future weeks, recognising that it will take quite a long time to filter through. And then on, on the back of that, we'll be able to have conversations with people about what the wider strategy is. So, so if, if we could get everybody to read the 76 pages, I would absolutely love it. But if we can get them just to start talking in their own family groups or community groups or, or their own work teams or whatever it is, just about what, what future South Yorkshire looks like. And I think that's how we kind of start this conversation. And we've got, we've got a wonderful colleague called Cathy McCardle from Barnsley, who, who's really, who wants us to start a movement about this, to try and build it into everything that we talk about. So, so yes, whilst, whilst we've come here today and given you the, the detail to the nth degree for, for our communities, it's really what's it look like for the future?
Just like to ask something slightly specific about the work that's been undertaken so far by the ICB. It's about inequalities and obviously you've been working on the emerging strategy and, and forward plan, and that's all going forward. But what, I wonder what you've already done in the last year or since July on tackling inequalities and how, what kind of work you've been able to do to, obviously, obviously you're not starting from scratch, there's a lot of knowledge that's come from previous, from, from prior to the ICB taking on statutory powers. But what kind of work has been done around that? And, and I ask the question because I've, I've been sort of made aware that there has been some ring fenced money for tackling inequalities and that South Yorkshire may not have been as far ahead as some of the integrated care systems in actually deploying that money. And I just wanted to really hear, you know, hear from yourselves about what's been done on that and, and how much money have we had and how has it been spent?
So I think it's probably helpful to start with the fact that we absolutely didn't start from scratch when we came together as NHS South Yorkshire. So all of our place partnerships have been absolutely very much focused in how, how do they address local health inequalities? And you'll know that from being part of the dialogue in your patch. We had a really helpful national framework that you'll probably also be aware of, the Core 20+ which is about, you know, those communities that we know that are in the kind of top 20% bribed and then those other kind of inclusion groups or different groups and communities that have been identified in each places. And on the back of that, our places have each taken forward a really wide range of different initiatives that support addressing health inequalities. So that could include things like looking at employment for people with learning disabilities, or it could include targeted work around the development of some of the family hub work that's starting in some of those places. So there's a really wide range of diverse work around health and quarters that is making use of some of our existing resources and flowing those through differently. What I can say is that I'm afraid I can't necessarily comment on the exact value of the funding around the health and quarters, because what we like to do is think about how we make use of our existing resources differently. But what I can do is take that kind of specific question back with us, if that is an area that you would like to learn a little bit more about as an overview and scrutiny committee. So we can absolutely do that, can't we? We can take that back. But I just wanted to kind of offer some reassurance that a lot of our work is very much focused on addressing health and quarters and that, you know, inequalities in access, inequalities in experience and inequalities in outcomes. So even in, you know, with respect to our acute trust and their areas of focus, they're very much focusing on some of the pathways where we know that we have got unwarranted variation in terms of the, the pathways and the, how we could improve those. So in absolutely every component of our system, we've got to focus around that health inequalities. That's one of the reasons why it's part of being a core purpose of an integrated care system. So if it's okay with you all, what we'll do is we'll take back the particular, specific nature of that question and then we can always come back to you with a bit more detail.
I think that would be good if we could, can we ask for a, a report back on that specific item? I think that would be really informative for us.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councillors? I've just, I've got a couple more, but I don't want to hog the floor. Councillor Smith.
Thanks, Chair. I think might be my last question. Not to go back to sort of engagement, but about, you know, with the workforce, obviously it's a huge thing. And then we were saying we can utilise the workforce, but then there's also the forward plan in ensuring that we're investing in the workforce. I was just wondering what your processes in that in, in terms of engaging in the general sort of health and care workforce within South Yorkshire and, and getting there, what, what's important to them and, and making sure that that forward plan instills and invests in that.
So as part of our approach to develop the joint forward plan, one of the things that we've done is identify the kind of, I suppose, the system experts and leads in each of our areas. And one of the questions that we've started to work with them through is, you know, how is it through their area of work, they are ensuring that they're engaging with their workforce and listening to their workforce voice? And we're just starting to bring together what we understand from that to inform the development of our workforce strategy. And that's one of the things, if you remember, we made a commitment to in our integrated care strategy. So there's an absolute acknowledgement that our health and care workforce is really important and probably our biggest asset and that we need to really understand how it is that we can better engage and listen to them and support them going forward. I mean, we are fortunate that we do have, each of our organisations have already, you know, through supporting their staff through what's been a really significantly challenging time, hasn't it, across health and care? Our organisations have already put together quite substantial support arrangements for workforce, but actually that needs to continue, doesn't it? We need to look at our opportunities to collaborate around that as well. I don't know whether you guys have got anything you want to add on workforce perspective?
I mean, only from kind of a high level, but it really is that partnership working and also recognising where the gaps are in our workforce, because, because clearly having worked in hospitals throughout the pandemic, our people are very tired and this winter's been probably the most challenging. So, so clearly the support for the workforce is huge. I know individual providers have gone to great, great lengths, right through from cancelling support through to providing vitamins during the winter for, for people who probably don't get that level of, of vitamin input, that's the level of detail our providers will have gone through to. So, so, but for, for us as an ICB, clearly we just need to, to find in, within our 72,000 people, are there ways in which we can, we can work better? Do we need to redirect them? are there ways in which we can work better? Do we need to redirect them to working in different ways that better support our communities and better support those patients? And it's really, that's where the ICB is at the start of its journey. So for our 72,000 people, they won't see some changes. But in the years to come, we might start to see how that vital group of people, I mean, 72,000 of 1.4 million is a sizable chunk, how those people react to the constant changing needs of their families, friends and everybody who they live alongside. So very much the start, but a huge amount of support has gone into helping those people certainly over the last three years. And I know each provider will have had such a wide range of support for them, everything they need really.
Just to add as well, our director of people culture and OD did pull me upon the fact that in the demographics questions in the ICP survey, we didn't ask people whether they worked for us either. So we have added that in for the JFP because it would be helpful to know if we are reaching out our own staff. So yeah, that's in there now.
Thank you, yeah. And just to clarify, from my understanding of the forward plan, there was workforce in that, wasn't there? Yeah, yeah. And so the NHS, you know, you work collab to with the NHS to make sure that, well, gaps or that they are supported with their needs, yeah.
Absolutely. So the Joint Forward Plan will have a section that's about our workforce development plans. And that will include, you know, how do we support our existing workforce? It'll include how will we dispatch, how we deliver against the NHS People Plan? And it will also be about, you know, how do we support future workforce growth? Knowing that there are some areas where actually we're going to really have to make some kind of targeted focus in order to ensure that we've got the right skills and expertise in that workforce going forward.
Thanks. On the workforce issue specifically to do with the ongoing crisis, we're dealing accessing GP appointments. I think, you know, the statistics don't look great, you know, when we've got, I can't remember the exact figures, it was like 14,000 people waiting over 28 days for GP appointments. It just is a reality, however, you know, however some people might want to. I don't know, I've seen it downplayed in some quarters and it's just not, you know, when I speak to GPs, you can't downplay it. They're so stressed about not being able to provide as they want to provide. What support is in place right now for those GPs? What can you do from, you know, from the highest level regionally to genuinely support people who are feeling unwell and anxious, stressed, suffering their own mental health issues, going into work, not sleeping at night, and just not seeing a brighter future coming in primary care? What actually is being done to support people and hopefully to help them not leave the profession?
Yeah, I mean, that's absolutely a difficult one, isn't it? And I think that kind of two questions interlink in a way. It's a case of how can we use our wider workforce to support GPs? So over the weekend, I was having a conversation with a paramedic whose last shift was yesterday as a paramedic. And tomorrow they'll be starting work in GP practices. So they'll spend their time in GP practices and going out to patients in their own homes to support GPs and take that section of the work so that the GPs can very much focus on those who probably more acutely unwell and prevent hospital admission in that way. So in the very short term, probably medium term, it's very much about how can we use the wider workforce, whether that's paramedics, whether that's nurses, to take a portion of that work away from GPs so that the GPs can choose who they want to focus their most energy on. I think the rise in the number of practice staff that are able to support them is supporting GPs a bit. And I do think the fact that GPs are able to do telephone calls for people who want telephone calls rather than see people in person is, again, playing its part. But if you take all of them in the round, actually, it still is a difficult position. We did look at the number of GPs we have in South Yorkshire now compared to the number that we had just before the pandemic started. And I think we'd seen probably a reduction in about 15 to 20. So I think we were talking about 1,220 pre-pandemic and we're probably down to about 1,200 now. So we've not lost a huge portion of the workforce. But like you say, that those people, those GPs are vital resource in the community. The pandemic's put a huge pressure on them. And as we talked about, staffing in acute hospitals, again, GPs have had huge challenges and they're very tired after those three years. So all of those measures, whether we can get practice staff or there is the ability for people to use NHS 111 and using community pharmacists, all of that will help in the short to medium term. But I think as you alluded to in your opening comments, clearly, a long-term plan is what's needed for that section of a workforce, as it is for the wider workforce itself.
Thank you. So I mean, you've just alluded to the wider workforce in general practice and the fact that not everyone needs to be seen by a GP. And I think that's something that we understand and it's something that GPs understand. But it's not necessarily something that the general public understand. And I had an interesting conversation with one of our Sheffield GPs. It was a discussion in our scrutiny committee actually around the transformation of GP services in North Sheffield, where community hubs are being developed. And we were talking about the concerns that the public have about access and how if their GP surgery is being moved further away, would it make the access problems even worse? It was a very interesting discussion. And in that discussion, this GP mentioned, highlighted really the difference between need and demand. And we know that demand is very, very high, but reflecting what you've just said, need to see your GP is not necessarily as high as demand. And people can be seen by somebody else. But I think there's a huge bit of work to be done in helping patients to understand that they're not getting a lesser service, they're not being fobbed off and the health isn't at risk by being seen by someone who's not called a GP. What can be done to address that, that lack of understanding really? And reassure the general public that they are being seen by the right person?
Yeah, absolutely. I think this has formed a large part of my career over the last decade of trying to convince people not to go to an A and E, let alone their GP. And I've probably spent a lot of my time trying to convince people to go to GPs rather than an emergency department. So now for this portion of my career, I'll be trying to convince people not necessarily to go and see their GP, but to speak to a community pharmacist first or call NHS 111 first or the NHS 111 online service, which is really improving and is a really good resource. But kind of, I think the strategy, if you're asked to underpin it, is we can talk about it in rooms like these and I can post it on social media and I can make resources available on our website and I can do all of those things. But what I really need to do, and I kind of alluded to it earlier on in the conversation, is
Excuse me?
Bless you. I need to get that conversation with our 72,000 health and care staff because they're the trusted people in our communities. They'll listen to them more than they will listen to myself, I'm sorry to say. So it is part of my role to get those 72,000 people acting as ambassadors for health and care, talking to their elderly relatives, talking to younger members in their families, talking to their neighbours, talking to their wider communities just about how best to use the health and care services we've got available as a society. And I do think you're absolutely right in the sense of if we can achieve that and get people thinking, yes, seeing a practice nurse is probably better than seeing a GP because they might have a specialty in dermatology and I'll wait 48 hours to see that advanced nurse practitioner who knows a lot about dermatology rather than a GP. I mean, that's a huge battle to be won, isn't it? But I think the benefits of us being able to do that are absolutely huge. And I think that'll be a huge positive for GPs as well. So when you have those conversations, who knows whether it'll be in six months' time, 12 months, three years, when they say, actually, my patients come to me and say they'd prefer to see the nurse rather than me and I can't believe it. So that will be where we're trying to get to, but I don't underestimate the size of the task we have ahead of us in doing so.
I think just to add to that and to reassure, the Joint Forward Plan will have a focus on primary care within it. And, you know, access, improving access will be one of the key priorities within that. And it will be, you know, thinking about primary care access points in its broadest sense. So by that, you know, kind of all the contractor groups that make up primary care and the contribution they can make to supporting patients. So not just community pharmacy, but, you know, kind of optometry, thinking about dentistry as well, you know, the improvements that we can make there. So, you know, the Joint Forward Plan, we are looking at how do we respond to that kind of, I suppose, the recovery element of the service? Because that's one of the things that people are telling us is really important to them.
I haven't seen my dentist for three and a half years now and they're still not prioritising, they still haven't removed the priority to catching up with urgent cases. So that's just a red flag for you. I just have one more quite specific question. Do other members have anything left that you want to ask? So this is maybe a bit of a naughty one, doesn't quite sit within the remit of this conversation, but I'm going to leave it with you anyway. If you don't want to answer it today, or if you're not the right people to answer it, then fine, but I feel the need to air it. So my question is, how will the South Yorkshire Plan address clause six of the NHS Constitution, which says the NHS is committed to providing the best value for taxpayers' money? Now, when we're in straitened times, sometimes it seems that a service needs to be commissioned fast or there's the danger of losing a service or something needs to be reconfigured to make something more efficient. And there's not necessarily the luxury of taking the time to explore all possibilities and look for the best value service provider. Is that a priority? And I wonder whether, well, really, I just want to explore how that part of the constitution of the NHS sits within this forward plan and the South Yorkshire procurement strategy. So is there a presumption towards in-sourcing or not-for-profit providers as the default over, say, a shareholder-owned private provider? So it's quite a specific question. I appreciate if you don't want to answer it today, but it's something that concerns me. When, you know, when a five-year plan is being drawn up, are there safeguards in there that mean we are getting the best value for money? Is the procurement strategy set around that?
I think if it's okay with yourself, it'd be really great to have that question in writing, you know, so that we can kind of, because it was quite a complex question, that one, wasn't it? For, you know, and so if we could have that question in writing, then what we can do is kind of work out how best we can consider and come back to on that. I think what would be helpful probably to offer reassurance around is that we are absolutely thinking about the kind of value element with respect to the development of our Joint Forward Plan. Because one of the core purposes of an ICS is to think about, you know, the kind of efficiency, value perspective. And that we will need to consider that procurement element within our Joint Forward Plan. We already have quite a lot of working together in South Yorkshire with respect to procurement. And through that, we've been able to ensure we are, in some cases, maximizing our efficiency and making some savings with respect to some of the procurement that we do. We've learnt an awful lot, I think, from some of our local authority colleagues as well with respect to some of their approaches to procurement, you know, thinking about social value and, you know, progressive procurement and local procurement. And I think that is absolutely the way that we would like to be going forward in terms of NHS South Yorkshire and working together in our trusts, some of which have made massive strides in terms of enabling local procurement. But it'd be really helpful, I think, to probably have that question in writing just to consider a bit more fully, if that's okay?
Yeah, thank you. Certainly we'll do that, yeah. Is there anything coming out of our discussions today that colleagues would like to add at that point? Or is there anything, we are asked to note various things in the recommendations to this report, but I wonder if there's anything we want to add to that in terms of receiving further report back in the future perhaps? Councillor Smith?
Thanks, Chair. I was thinking it would be really good to kind of get sort of an update, I suppose, and keep, you know, keeping us in the loop on some of this, especially the engagement stuff. And I think using us in place is really, 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 because like Health Watch is great, but I've certainly, you know, they've told me they're under, they're stretched as well. And to use these different events and things that are going on in different communities to be able to get certain engagement out of it. And I think I would, I don't know if the panel would like to see this, but I'd like to see more stuff on the engagement with the workforce and supporting the workforce.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I think, yeah, some of the questions we've asked today about how workforce planning is happening and how workforce is being supported, I think it would be good to hear more back on that. Could we have a report back on that in, to a future meeting? Of course, we're just about to go into a new municipal year, so we don't know when our next meeting is. But if perhaps that could be considered for one of our future meetings. Councillor Ennis, anything to add? So in which case, I think we're asked to, well, first of all, can I thank you for your time and for answering our questions so comprehensively and bearing with us on that. And so we're asked to note the work undertaken to develop the ICB's initial integrated care strategy for South Yorkshire, including the engagement work within the challenging timeline set nationally. So I think probably we agree to note that, but to add to that, that we'd like to hear more back from you about engagement and to be part of that engagement in our place, in our four places. To note the plans for ongoing engagement, so ditto, we'd like to be more part of that. And to note the work underway to develop the NHS five-year Joint Forward Plan for South Yorkshire and consider how to approach scrutiny. And the last part of that, I think, is something that we just need to establish between ourselves that that is going to be a core part of how things go forward. And although this committee hasn't met for a very long time, we're back. So we do intend, you know, that this committee is a full part of the process. So, you know, that we perhaps get early sight of reports would be really helpful to members because our reading load is significant. So the earlier we have sight of things, the better enabled we are to ask the right questions. So I think Deborah does like to comment about that.
There was just the issue of tackling inequalities as well. You'd asked for a report back on that, haven't you?
Yeah, thanks, Deborah. Yeah, so in addition to the items that we're noting here, if you could come back about that and about the question about procurement. Thank you. So we're happy to note what's been presented to us today and ask for those additional items. Thank you, members. And thank you once again for your time. It's been extremely useful to us to hear direct from you about all of these plans. And I'm sure we've got more questions in the future. So I look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you, everybody.